...excuse me, 2018 zoning board of appeals meeting. All members present except with the exception of Mr. Nate Orsiani. Other than that, okay, first thing on the agenda is the minutes for November 16, 2017. Has everybody on the board had a chance to look at these? Are there any questions, any changes?
Looks good to me.
Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Not hearing any discussion, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Toby, you have a clean copy for Raj to sign?
Yes.
Okay, good. Let's get that out of the way. Okay. All right, December 6th, the executive session, you're still working on those, right?
Um, yes.
Okay, all right, so we'll push that off. Okay, all right, the next thing that was on the agenda was the information, informational discussion.
Could we just wait so I can get that?
Yep. Thank you, Raj. Okay, you all set?
Yes.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda was informational discussion with Natasha Moncel regarding her property at 62 Central Street. Unfortunately, Ms. Moncel, Mrs. Moncel emailed us today and stated that she was not going to be able to make it. She has another conflict, but she did ask if she could get on the February agenda, which Toby graciously told her that, you know, she would contact her and let her know we have at least one public hearing that night and maybe two others, so we may have a possible three, but right now we have one definite, so we'll, we'll let her know. Okay, next thing, building inspector, you're up, sir. Come on down. You're the next person on the ZBA agenda. Okay, the building inspector is here to discuss 92 North Main Street construction and the lottery, if he has any information. The only other thing that I asked the building inspector to check was snow. Where are they putting the snow up at 92 North Main Street? And to make sure that where the snow is, is what's on the plan, what was on the plan, where it's supposed to be. And the other thing too is, and I've had some people ask me about the sign down at the bottom of the hill, and I asked the building inspector to check the sign and to check the, the, the plans to see what the size of the sign was supposed to be. So with that information, Bentley, you're up.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, gentlemen, for your viewing pleasure, we have, I spoke to the rental agent today. A building has two units rented, B has zero, C has 12. They're all market units.
Okay, hold on. A is two?
Yes.
Okay, just out of curiosity, are they two bedrooms or three bedrooms?
All of A is three bedrooms, I believe.
Is, there's a couple?
Okay, I'm not sure that, how many bedrooms?
Okay.
They just said two units.
A, all of them are three bedrooms.
Not in A, there's some, there's some B, there's some two bedrooms in there too.
It's in B, B is the one, two, and three.
There's 14 total units in, in A, and I thought eight of them, or six of them were three bedrooms and eight were two bedrooms. Okay, well anyways, if you could check on that and let us know.
Yeah.
Okay, how many in B?
Zero.
Zero, and how many in C?
Twelve.
And they're all?
Market.
Market value?
Yeah.
Wow, that's not good.
I've had a request for the final at A building.
Final request for?
The final inspection.
Okay.
I didn't know if that was to be issued, I thought you wanted me to hold that until everything was complete.
I thought we were gonna just give them a temporary until everything, until after the spring comes and he does the playgrounds and all the, you know, plantings and all the other landscaping, and then he does the as-built. Once, once he submits the as-built and everything's, you know, fine, the engineer signed off on it and everything is, we have VHB reviewer to make sure that what the engineer is signing off on is actually what was done, what was on the plan. So he can get a temporary.
He has a temporary on there.
Okay, and that's, that's the only thing. Does the board have any, any issues with that?
Temporary is fine, but, you know, we were, we have been talking about not only this buildings and other businesses, how do we, you know, get into you, you are issuing the temporary and never been, you know, as-built, certificate of completions, all those things are pending. So one year, two year, three year, 10 year, 100 years, they never come back, so.
Understood.
When you issue a temporary, how, that's for, a good for a year, right?
One year, for commercial, yes.
So he needs to get, he'll know that he needs to get all that other stuff, and he's been so far, he's been working well with everybody, so let's hope that that continues. I mean, I understand that it's winter time, he's not going to be able to do certain things, and that's understandable, but hopefully when the spring comes and, you know, the snow is gone, he's able to get in there and get the stuff done. I'm sure that he wants to get it done as soon as, as he possibly can, so.
Good news is dog park's done.
The dog park is done, oh, good. And it's where it was supposed to be on the map?
I mean, it's to get, had a dog park, but he added one.
He added one?
Yeah, walking area for the dogs, including fake fire hydrants.
Oh, cool. And where is that located at? Behind A building?
To the right, when you're facing A building, all the way to the right.
Okay, but it's in the back of the building?
It's all, all the way in the right of the building.
All the way to the right.
Behind the dumpsters.
Okay, behind dumpsters. Okay. All right, what else?
Okay, for the sign permit, I did have a sign permit for that, it was permitted, and in the comprehensive permit, there is a portion on sign saying that he could have a six by eight permanent project, project sign, projects, I'm sorry, project sign with attractive lighting. And his sign is not six by eight, it's four by eight, so it's smaller than what was approved.
Okay, but the project sign was just to show the project, that was not the final sign, right?
Uh, let me just...
Don't they usually, don't, doesn't a developer usually put up a, like they did over at, where they're building the condos, the townhouses over on 90 Sterling Street? He has a temporary sign up there just to show what's there. That's just a, a temporary sign, that's a...
No, this one's a permanent sign.
That's a permanent sign?
And this does say, "For placement of an approximate six by eight permanent project sign with attractive lighting."
Okay, does he have attractive lighting?
At the project entrance, he has that up and it is lit.
All right, so...
But it's not six by eight, which is allowed, which was allowed by the ZBA, it's four by eight.
Okay, so he went, he went smaller.
So he went smaller on that.
Okay, so he's all set with that then?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, what else?
I've got a couple of items that are not, well, I'll get to that one in a minute. As far as the Girl Scouts, I know that's on your agenda.
Okay.
If it's okay, I'll jump in with what, I just got information on that this afternoon.
Okay.
I got a zoning interpretation form from Suzanne Kelly, and I had a phone call with her, and she said the engineer doesn't really want to work with the ZBA, he only works with, wants to work with the planning board.
Well, so in other words, what he's saying is, is that as far as the variance, he doesn't want to work with the ZBA?
He just wants to work, yeah, he, that's why we, he's been, we hadn't got anything from them, because I was waiting for, from him or from somebody, and she took the initiative to apply for that today.
Okay, so, at the last planning board meeting...
In this case, who receives the variance?
Typically, it's the person that applies for...
No, which, is it ZBA or the planning board?
ZBA.
She needs ZBA approval.
Then he has to come to the ZBA.
And the planning board, when you, when they met at the last time, they told him that he needed to, Vinny told him that he needed to get variance from the ZBA.
Yeah.
Okay, well...
Leave it, leave it as is?
Okay, also, if I may?
Yep.
They submitted another plan for me to, to deny, you know, for the, for the zoning interpretation form, but unfortunately, it's so small and it has no elevations, so retaining wall isn't even shown, you know, doesn't even say the height or what, what it's holding back, so I, when she called me, or I called her, we talked about that, and I said I need something with elevations, because otherwise the retaining wall, I don't know if it's a four-foot wall or a 10-foot wall, and if it's a four-foot wall, it would conform a zoning, but if it's a six-foot wall or more, it would not, so therefore I couldn't make any determination with just this piece of paper. And their other request was, because Century Drive hooks around their building?
Mm-hmm.
If they could call the front of the building, you can't see, instead of the front of the building being here?
Right.
The front of the building being over here, so they would not have parking on the front setback. They would call this the front setback and this the side.
Okay, but where would be the front entrance of the building be?
It's right here. Just so they could get around the parking in the front, but that's, I believe, a planning board.
Yeah, because according to the, the zoning bylaw, you can't have parking in the front of the building. It has to be either to the side or to the rear.
Yeah.
Okay, and the way their plan, when they came before the, the planning board, what they showed was, is that their parking was going to be in the front of the building, and that was another thing that they would have had to come to the ZBA for variance, to have that. So, I don't know, is that...
I love to, can, I mean, we'll see when, when they're before us, but I wonder if there's something in the bylaws around, in a situation like this where the street wraps around two sides of a building, if there's...
Do you gentlemen think that maybe that might be an issue, that's something that the planning board would be able to discuss?
I mean, they usually provide, you know, that advisory letter when there's something coming to the ZBA, I think that, that might give us some of their feedback.
Okay, all right. So have you talked to the engineer from Bowler?
Only, well, twice, but not recently. Not about, this was just given to me today.
Okay.
Now you do not talk to him.
So I'm assuming that that's one of the priorities on Monday when you're here, is to contact him to find out?
Well, he said he's not interested in meeting with the zoning board, so I gotta talk, Suzanne was saying she was gonna get a plan that had, had something I can review, because it just didn't show any dimensions or elevations?
Okay.
That I need.
All right, well, if it's okay with the board, I'll reach out to the planning board to find out if in fact, that if he does need a variance, he has to come, because I don't believe that the planning board can, can waive that.
Yeah, but, you know, it's the building inspector's decision, so he can deny.
Right.
Once he denies.
Right, then they can...
So that's the applicants, who are the applicant responsibility, whether they want to go to the planning board, or the zoning board, or any other board. So, that's my, you know, if someone says, you know, "I'm not interested in going before the zoning board," then they are not, but, you know, there is a rules and regulations, bylaws. If it is, you know, if, even if they go to the planning board, the planning board will say, "No, that's not us, it's the zoning board of appeals."
Okay, all right.
So then they will know it, right?
All right, okay, not a problem. All right, anything else?
One other minor thing that wasn't on the agenda, but it's something that I just realized this week, as of first of the year, Massachusetts has adopted the ninth edition of the building code.
Okay.
And one of the changes in the building code is about a fence, it, the, the building code in previous years said, previous editions, said the fence six feet or less, uh, six feet or more needed, I'm sorry, over six feet needed a building permit. Now it's saying over seven feet needs a building permit. So it changes by a foot.
So they don't have to come, they don't have to get a special permit? Unless it's, unless it's going to be more than seven feet?
More than seven feet.
Okay, all right.
Well, I think it's, so one issue is a building permit, the other issue is a special permit.
Right. In other words, if it's six, if it was six feet or less, then all he had to get was a building permit. Anything over six feet, he would have had to come, they would have had to come to the, to the, to the ZBA for variance.
So I think...
No, not seven.
The bylaws say four feet, right, I, I believe?
No.
I haven't looked at it.
There is no, but, nothing in our bylaws about fencing.
Nothing?
It's just the building code.
Okay.
Over, the building code, the way, the way it was written, anything over, it wouldn't necessarily have to come to the ZBA unless they wanted to get, over six feet would be considered a structure, would have to maintain property line setbacks.
Okay.
Now it's the same language, if it's over seven feet, it needs a permit and has to ...
Okay.
...maintain property line setbacks.
Yeah.
So it's the same language, it's, the height is different. Only time they need to come to you if they could, did not, if they wanted relief and not...
Setback.
On the setback requirements.
Okay.
Nothing to do with the height.
Okay.
It's just a setback.
Okay, and is that what we went through with the cemetery?
That's what, that's what, um, when I first came on the board, that was our first thing, was a variance for the cemetery.
And the setback issue?
Yes, for the cemetery. That and the fact is, they wanted an eight-foot or 10-foot fence, so that was, that was our first, our first thing that we had, and we approved that.
All right.
So...
That, that's an interesting note, that the building code's changed.
It's just a minor, but I know the fence height is something that we deal with, and I figured I'd mention it to you guys, so are you informed on the change?
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, I do have a question. We did get the zoning interpretation request form for 339 Maple Street. This is the property where it's one piece of property, but the gentleman is gonna buy the property from the owner?
Mm-hmm.
And is going to divide it into three lots, and they're looking for reduction of frontage. Okay, so Bradford Shaw is the owner of the property, but he's not gonna, he's not the developer, correct?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay, all right. And he's aware of the fact that he's the one that has to come and apply for the special permit? Also too, he really needs to make sure, or the developer needs to make sure that once he purchases it from the develop, from the, from Mr. Shaw, he would have to come back to the ZBA for a, um...
Reduction.
Yeah, to, to change it over into his name, okay? So...
What is the address?
339 Maple Street. It's in your packet.
Yeah.
As long as, as long as everybody understands that the owner of the property is the one that has to request a special permit, okay? Once the developer buys the property from him, from that individual, then he needs to come back, come to the ZBA and request, you know, the changeover. And that's, that's accordance to the...
Yeah.
Sounds good.
To the forms and stuff, that, that would be, have to happen.
Okay, so we'll look into this, and he's already received this? Mr. Shaw has already gotten this?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and so he'll be coming back, or he'll be contacting the ZBA to get, okay. Toby, you're gonna be on the lookout for that, right? Okay, all right. That's our girl, Toby. Does good work. All right, and anything else? Anybody have any questions for the building inspector on anything that has to contain with the building department or anything else?
No.
No? Charlie?
No.
Nothing? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We appreciate you coming in and letting us know. Oh, what about the snow?
Oh, fortunately, there wasn't a whole lot of snow. We haven't had, you know, two feet of snow, and they were able to, they, because I did check the site plan?
Yeah.
And they showed some places where they were gonna be putting snow, and they didn't use some of those areas yet. They was able to push it all down to the very ends, which is also shown as a area for snow storage.
So basically, he's putting the snow removal where it's supposed to go?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. All right, anything else? All right, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
And you'll keep us abreast of what's gonna happen with the Girl Scouts.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right, next...
Gentlemen?
Have a good night, have a nice weekend.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing that's on the agenda is the declaration of covenant for home occupation.
No, you have the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I keep, well...
It's 7:05.
Oh, 7:05, okay, I'm sorry, excuse me. Okay, all right, public hearing. Okay, you wanna read it, Raj?
Sure.
Okay, go for it.
Public notice is hereby given in conformity with the requirement of general bylaw of the Town Office of Boylston, Article 23, public hearing and notice that the zoning board of appeals will meet on Thursday, January 18, 2018, at 7:05 PM for the purpose of considering amending their fee schedule. The meeting will be held in the meeting room within of the Town Hall, 140 Ooster Street, West Boylston. For additional informations or review of the proposed information, please contact the Office of the Board of Appeals at 774-261-4072. All interested persons, groups, and agencies are invited to attend. David Fimia, Chairman.
Okay, Toby, did we have anybody contact us about, any questions about the fees?
No, nobody.
Nobody, okay. Okay?
Yes, sure.
All right, so, one of the things that's there on the next page is the current fee and then the proposed fee. And just so that you know, I have, I'd like to make a change, okay? And of course, with the, the approval of the board, that is. Where it says, "Special permit except for accessory apartment," I also want to add to that, "Home occupancy" or "home occupation." So the special permit would go from 350 to 400, but it would not include the accessory apartment or home occupation. And then the next one would be accessory apartment and home occupation special permit, and that would go from 200 to 300. And the rest of it will stay the same, the variance will go from 350 to 4, administrative appeal, 350 to 4, comprehensive permit, 500 to 550, and 100 per unit to 150 per unit. Are there any questions, any discussion, any quims or quads?
So we haven't received feedback, or questions or anything from, from folks?
From anybody?
Have any other boards talked about this, as far as folks are aware?
No, nobody's contacted us, and it's been in the paper twice, the fourth and the 11th, and it's been on the, it's been on the web?
Town website.
Town website, so...
But it hasn't been in the paper?
No, not the paper, I mean, it's been on the town website, so I mean, they, and they know that this, that this is, that this was coming.
Yeah, and, exactly, and again, just to summarize, the motivation for looking at updating the, the fee schedule, is it a combination of things?
Okay, first of all, the board ran out of money.
Yeah.
And I had to go before the, the finance committee to get a reserve transfer for $1,000.
Okay.
And until that was approved, Toby couldn't work.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And so, and Town Administrator and other people have told me that what we need to do is go ahead and raise our fees.
Yeah.
And I've been trying to do this for...
It's our only source of revenue.
Right, and everything that...
Revenue is fine, when compared to other towns.
Yeah. I tried that, and nobody responded. Nobody responded. I went to two towns, I went to Holden and I went to Shrewsbury, and they just, they gave me some information, but they really weren't interested in helping me.
Yeah, so I, I did just a little bit of searching online to see, just to see what I could find.
Right.
Fairly quickly, I did look at Sterling.
Yeah.
I saw an amount of $400?
Yeah.
For a special apartment request, I, Shrewsbury, I think it was 300 in Shrewsbury. Boylston was, was significantly less, I think Boylston was 100. I'm not sure if it was an up-to-date document that I was searching for, again, this was just a, a quick search, but, I'm, I don't think it, we are, you know, that these proposed fee increases are out of line, it seems like, with, with the few other towns that I took a look at. And if there is, you know, obviously a, a revenue need here, then we need to, you know, seriously consider.
Because this is our sole...
Raj, you got it.
Yes, I totally agree on all of those. We do need to make, you know, we haven't changed the fees for a long time.
Right.
And it seems like the Board of Health did increased, so other boards are also, you know, but, uh, on looking at this, you know, mo, all of the fees are like a $50 increase. I'm wondering, you know, the board will consider to increase the accessory apartment, the home occupation special permit to be from 200 to 250. It seems to be like a good jump, 50% jump.
The reason I, I wanted to change, well, I suggested the 300, is because of all the work that goes into it. There's probably a lot more work that goes into that than just a regular special permit. And also too, the after, the aftercome of it is getting that declaration of covenant, coventry, you know, that takes a lot of work, because we have to make sure that, that the, the person that got the special permit comes back to us, we have to make sure that they have the decision by the board, the appeal, you know, all of that information, they have to go to the registry of deeds, and it's just a lot more work for us, you know, than just a regular special permit. So that's why I thought that, you know, and that's all, you know, all our secretary doing all that work, so...
Agree, totally agree.
So, I mean, I, I felt that going up $100 on that, we don't get a lot of those, but when we do, it's a lot of work, it's more than do, than just doing the, the special, the regular special permit. I mean, if you, if you want it, if the board decides, if they want to do it?
What do you think on that?
I mean, when I first saw it, I, I picked up on that too, as if that was the one, it's increasing more.
Yeah, that's what my, one thing, and I, so we are just picking on one, one kind of person in, one kind of group, hey, you give me more money than all other groups.
But, I mean, it still is, on, if you look at the proposed schedule, it still is the lowest amount of...
Yeah, agree, but variance, special permits, you know, administrative comprehensive permit, those are all the bigger ones?
Yeah.
Compared to accessory apartment. Accessory apartment, we have five, six criteria, if it is there, yes, if it is not there, no. So, anyway, it's, for me, you know, I thought about it, and I'm just getting the opinion of the board.
Mm-hmm. Charlie? Any?
No, I don't know.
Okay.
Chris? I'm, I'm, honestly, I'm comfortable with either figure, whether it's 250 or 300. To me, it doesn't make a significant difference. And again, just given that the motivation for this, you know, is, you know, increasing revenue, we, we need to, we need the secretary?
Right.
A good board.
Right.
So that's, that's...
And, 'cause, you know, people just don't understand, you know, what, what all is involved, you know, answering the phone, you know, relaying messages, other boards, you know, calling us to, you know, to get information, so, you know, but I did look at the accessory apartment, and I did look at the home occupancy, and I felt that the jump from two to three was substantial, but I also felt that it was fair, because we don't get a lot of them, but when we do, there's just a lot more work involved, you know, things that we have to make sure that, that the petitioner, you know, accomplishes, so...
I'm, I'm comfortable with, with the proposed.
All right, so looking at this, the fees, the variance from 350 to 400, the special permit except the accessory apartment and home occupation, occupation 350 to 400, the accessory apartment and home occupation special permit from two to three, administrative appeal, three to four, comprehensive permit, five and one to 550 and 150. Can I have a motion to...
Administrative appeal is 350, not three to 50?[1781.62] Administrative appeal is three hundred and fifty, not three to fifty?
Three fifty to four.
Three fifty, three hundred and fifty dollars to four hundred, guys.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to approve as I just?
So moved, yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. So, this will go into effect as of the first of February. Toby, you will make sure that this gets to Karen, and so that she can get it on the web, on the town webs page, and on the ZBA, so that people know that as of the first of February, these are the new fees, okay?
Does the, do the selectmen need to?
Nope.
Okay, this is all?
Nope.
Okay.
And just in case, if a question came to you. Okay? Okay. In accordance with the general bylaw, section two, notice to the public of a change in town rules, regulations, fees, schedules, and hours of operation prior to the effective date of any change in policies, rules, and regulations that govern the use of town buildings, facilities, and property, policies, rules, and regulations that increase, decrease, alters, or modifies any fee schedule for municipal services, use of town facilities, buildings, or municipal license, and permits, and instances where the authority of establishing such fee schedule is vested in the local authority, policy, rules, and regulations that increase, decrease, alters the hours of operation accessibility to the public of a municipal department, program, or service, policy, rules, and regulations that increase, decreases, or alters the level of a municipal service or program provided to the citizens of West Boylston, policy, rules, and regulations that promulgate, and eliminate, eliminates, alters, or modifies any rule or regulation in instance with effects to the rights of the citizen, to awfully, lawfully use and enjoy their private property, and to operate lawful business with the town of West Boylston with the authority to promulgate such rules or, is vested in the local authority, the town, department, board, committee, commission, or officer, including municipal light plan. Responsibility, responsible for promulgating such change in policy, rules, and regulations shall notify the public of such changes by causing to be published on the town's website, a notice of such changes in public rules, policies, rules, regulations, fees, schedules, hours of operation, or levels of service on at least one occasion, at least seven-day calendar days prior to said effective date.
Yep.
Which we did.
Which we did.
And nothing, and I, I talked to, um, to Nancy, and according to this?
That's it.
We don't have to?
Yep.
It's our baby?
That's simple.
And we're gonna, we're just gonna do that.
Simple.
So, all right. So, so that's taken care of.
If, for whatever reason, we wanted to revisit that in the future, we could always do so.
Right. Okay. All right. The next thing is, and I think I'm, I'm on track now, the Declaration of Covenant for Home Occupation Use Form. Okay? Now, Mr. Olsen was kind enough to take the, um, the sample that we got from town council and look at it, and kind of incorporate it into how, you know, what we would have. He looked at the, um, the, uh, the accessory apartment and kind of went to, you know, to that. I then, with that, came up with some changes, okay? And I added some stuff. And basically, I took it from the accessory apartment, okay? Whereas in the witness here are, here were, the, it should say, "Just the property owner has, had, here on to set his hands, or his or her hands, and seal this date, or whatever the date." And then the property owner would sign it, and then he'd put his, and then put his name down there, and then everybody on the ZBA would sign it, okay? And then, on the next page, acknowledgement must be completed by the property owner. Comma, the Massachusetts, Worcester, he would take then, take this form along with the, uh, copy of the special permit that he received from the board, the vote sheet, the appeal, if there was no appeal, the decision and this form presented to the Registry of Deeds, have them sign it, put their stamp on it, and then bring it back to the, and then bring it back to us, and we'll file it in his record, so that that shows that not only did he get the special permit, but it's also on his deed that he has this, and that when he goes to sell the property, this, this is done. So, any questions? I mean, you did a great job. I appreciate it. Thank you very much for that. Um, like I said, the, like, the only thing I added was just that.
Yeah.
Okay, Toby, so we're gonna, on that second page of the home, where it says, in witness there, or thereof, it's just gonna read, "The property owner and the Zoning Board of Appeals of West Boylston."
Let me grab my copy.
Okay.
Okay, so, page two?
Yeah.
Yeah, halfway down.
Where it says, "In witness thereof."
Uh-huh.
Okay. "We, the property owner and the Zoning Board of Appeals of West Boylston, have here, here unto set our hands and sealed this," and then we're just gonna leave that as is.
Okay.
Okay? And then what they'll do is the property owner will put his signature to the one side, and then print his name, and then the ZBA will, will sign it.
So, they've got, all the members have to sign?
Right. All the members have to sign it.
Okay.
And then, once, once he, once that's done, okay? Then we'll come in, you know, he'll come, you'll fill all this out for him, and then we'll all sign it, and he'll come in, and he'll sign it, and then you'll give him all the copies, this copy and the vote sheet, the, the grant, the, the decision, and the, that there was no appeal to the decision that we made. And all of that he'll take to the, to the registry, and he'll, you'll instruct him that he needs to get this signed by the registry with this, with the seal, so that we know that he went to the registry, and he needs to bring it back to us. We keep the original, you make a copy for him, and then we put this in his file.
Now, when does he go to the town clerk? Does she have to?
He doesn't have to go to the town clerk at all.
Really?
Yep. This has, this has nothing to do with the town clerk.
Oh.
The only thing the town clerk has is she, you know, we gave her the decision, is, and she just had to sign off on that, that there was no appeal. That's it. The rest of this is all ZBA.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? All right? If you have any questions or any concerns, you know, contact me. All right?
Yeah. I, I just always have a problem with what it is that they have to bring to the registry.
Okay.
Do they have to get the original?
No, just a, just a copy.
'Cause, um?
As long as it has, like, as far as, as far as the decision, it'll be signed by me, okay? It's a copy. That's not a problem. The appeal is stamped by the, by the town clerk, okay? And that'll be a copy of that. It shows that the town clerk stamped it, okay?
Okay.
The vote sheet is, is a copy of the vote sheet to show that we voted on that, okay? And then this form, and that's it.
Right. Okay.
Okay? All right. That takes care of that. Okay. All right. All right, so that's then. Okay, ZBA forms updated. Okay. All right. I know we've talked about this for quite a while, okay? And last Saturday, I sat home, and I was bored. I didn't have much to do. Unusual. So, I decided, you know, I looked at this, and I'm like, okay, this hasn't been revised since October of two thousand and two. That's sixteen years ago. So, I took this, and I started looking at it, okay? And let's just run through it real quickly, okay? On the first page, I changed from twenty copies to twenty-four copies, and then where it says, on number seven, where it says, "Form C, the abut is to the property, uh, by contacting the assessor's office at, and that the assessor will get, you know, tell them what their hours are, so that they can go there," you know, and I gave them the phone number that they can call the assessor, okay? And then the rest of it is changed to twenty-four copies, twenty-four copies, twenty-four copies, twenty-four copies, okay? And then, now, and Chris, I'm gonna need your help with this one. On that first paragraph down there, which says, "Separate all pages," separate all pages, okay? That last line, where it says, "Please staple each package together. You should have twenty-four packages or twenty-four packages for comprehensive permit." Is that kind of like a double?
Yeah, if you're gonna up the first, that amount from twenty to twenty-four.
Yeah. Does both of those have to be in there?
No, 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 no.
Can you just?
In earlier, you know, earlier, it says, "All, all of them are twenty copies," whereas comprehensive permit, twenty-four copies. That's why they are saying.
Okay.
So, all they have to do is just twenty-four copies.
Okay. So, I can admit you, uh, the twenty packages.
One of those things you can.
Okay, that, and just leave, "You should have twenty-four packages for comprehensive permit."
Yeah.
Okay, all right. And then down below, the clerk, town clerk and assessor's office?
Oh, one second, one second. Twenty-four co, you should have twenty-four packages.
Packages.
Period. That's it.
Okay.
Not for comprehensive.
Right.
Yep.
Okay. All right. And that's what I have, twenty-four packages for comprehensive permit, right?
No.
What?
No comprehensive permit.
No, this is, this is specifically for the comprehensive permit?
No, no. No, no.
This one, for me, is for the comprehensive permit?
No, that's for the administrative appeal. In this one, they're talking about, they're talking about the comprehensive permit. This is what they have to have for comprehensive permit, is the twenty-four packages for comprehensive permit.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
No, there. So, "Separate all pages into packages consisting of all completed forms, comma, placed in half a particular order after the petition, the letter of denial from the inspector of buildings, any additional list of, and, all plans. Please staple each packages, each package together. You should have twenty packages for all other things, or twenty-four packages for comprehensive permit."
Okay, okay. So, twenty packages?
No, 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 no. You changed it for everything twenty-four.
Right.
So, now, it should read, you should have twenty-four packages. That's it.
Irrespective of what, what kind of petition.
Anything is. What kind of petition?
Okay, so you should have twenty-four packages.
That's it.
That's it. And cross out the, for the com, the comprehensive permit.
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I understand that. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, then down below, it says, "Submit the petition to town clerk during reg," okay, town clerk is, opposed, okay, I put down, "The town clerk can be contacted at, for office hours, the assessor's office can be contacted at." I'm giving them the phone number for them to call to find out exactly what their office hours are, so that there's no, while I went to the town clerk's office, they weren't open, or I went to the assessor. They can call prior to the, before them going, so that they'll know that they're gonna be there, okay?
So, then, should we be crossing out that line, "Town clerk and assessor's office," or is posted on the website?
Yes, yes.
Yes, and cross that.
Okay. And then I changed it from Kim D. Hopwell, town clerk, to Elaine Esenovia, because she's now the town clerk. And I changed, revised March of twenty nineteen, uh, twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
Okay. And I put down March, I mean, if you, if the board so desires, we can do it, you know, as first of February, or we can do it the first of March, depending on how, what the board deems necessary.
Again, pursuant to what you read earlier, we're gonna need another public hearing for that, correct?
No, not for this.
No?
No. These are our forms.
Okay.
Has nothing to do. This is, these are our forms. We don't need to have a public hearing for that.
Good to know.
Okay. All right. So, the next page is to the board of, it's the petition to the Board of Appeals of West Boylston. The undersigned respectfully petitions from the Zoning Board of Appeals, not your honorable board. That doesn't, I don't like that. That doesn't make any sense to me. From the Zoning Board of Appeals, and then they'll check off and fill it out, then on the bottom, it'll say revised March of two thousand and eighteen. On the next page, uh, number eight, the undersigned has filed twenty-four copies of the petition, if required, and twenty-four copies of any plans and supplementary schedules.
Um, so, for the date on this, are we doing February or March?
I don't know. We'll, we'll decide when we, after we go through all of this. We'll decide whether we want this to go into effect first of February, first of March, okay? All right. Next page. Okay.
Before then.
Okay.
Toby, do you have a word form of this application?
Um, yeah.
Oh, you do?
So, I can change it.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so now, on the next page, where it says, "Petition," and then it gives, okay, down here, where it says, "V variance, special permit, or administrative appeal, except the accessory apartment and our home occupation," is four hundred dollars. The accessory apartment and the home occupation. Toby, you're gonna need to write that in.
We've gotta add "and" home occupation.
Yeah. Okay, so the first one, where it says, "V variance, special permit, or administrative appeal," you're gonna put in parentheses, "Except accessory apartment and home occupation."
Um.
And that'll be four hundred dollars. You see what I'm saying?
Right. But we have a separate place anyway for accessory apartment.
Right. And then the next one is gonna be accessory apartment and home occupation.
So, we don't have to put the "except" on the top line, because they have, they have separate lines already?
I know, but I want to make sure that people understand.
To make it clear.
To make it clear that that four hundred dollars is only if it's a variance, a special permit, or an administrative appeal, but there's not include an accessory apartment or a home occupation, special permit. That'll come in the next one, where it says, "Accessory apartment and home occupation." That's the one that we just changed from two hundred to three hundred.
So, that, in that case, you won't be putting it like a variance or special permit for variance, uh, variance, comma, special permits for accessory apartments and home occupation?
No. V variance, special permit, or administrative appeal is four hundred dollars.
For all other things.
For all of that things. Except, with the exception of the accessory apartment and the home occupation, which will be on the next line, which will say accessory apartment.
So, accessory apartment comes under what?
Uh-huh.
Special permit, right?
Yes. But it's separate, because it's less money than a regular special permit.
No, do we need to mention accessory apartment? You are putting as a fee, accessory apartment.
Yes. I'm making it perfectly clear, so that people understand what the difference is.
Do you understand what I mean? So, when we say here, you know, "V variance, special permits for other things," here also we have to say, "Special permit for accessory apartment." That's my question.
Yeah, so.
"Special permit fee for accessory apartment."
Yeah, what I'm thinking of is?
Much more clear.
Okay, so you want to put down, "Accessory apartment and home occupation special permit Okay, so you wanna put down accessory apartment and home occupation, special permit is three hundred dollars. Okay. Did you get that, Toby?
That makes very clearly.
Okay, that's, that's, that's...
But you still want me to put it on the top?
Right, on the top, you're gonna put down, except, except the accessory apartment and the home occupation. So anything is, if any kind of a variance, a special permit or administrative appeal that has nothing to do with the accessory apartment, home occupation, is gonna be four hundred dollars. If it's a home occupation or accessory apartment, they're looking for a special permit, it's gonna be three hundred dollars.
It doesn't say it's a fee.
And then the comprehensive permit is five fifty and a hundred and fifty. Okay, now, going into that, review fees for comprehensive permit. I had some questions about this, and I need some guidance on this. Okay, if you go down to one, two, three, four, five, six, the sixth line, where it says alternatively, okay, "The board may, by majority vote, require that the applicant pay a reasonable project review fee of a sufficient sum to enable the board to," and I crossed off retail, "retain consultants chosen by the board alone." Okay? "The board may require that an applicant deposit a lump sum in order to retain consultants. In the event that such sum is insufficient to fund the necessary consulting services, the board may require additional deposits." Now, what I was thinking, and I talked to some people, what, a suggestion that was made to me is, is that maybe instead of just putting down a sum, maybe putting down like fifteen percent of the total cost of the project. So if you had a, or twenty percent, whatever, so if it's a ten million dollar project, right, they would have to put down two hundred thousand dollars, right? Correct? Is my math right?
It's a ten million.
Yeah. So it's two.
Well, ten percent of ten million's gonna be one million.
Okay, so then, would it be, we wanna keep it in the hundred thousand.
Yeah.
So it'd be like, what? I mean, do you even wanna entertain that?
A certain percentage.
Because what my concern is, is, is that, you know, we're gonna have an argument about, you know, how much are they gonna pay? You know, we wanna make sure that it's clear, that they know that when they get, when they're coming before us for this, they're gonna have to pay for our consultants, if we need one, you know? They're gonna pay for VHB, the engineer, they're gonna pay for whoever we bring in as our consultant.
Yep.
You know, they'll have one for them, we have to have one to represent us too, you know?
Yep.
And they need to pay for. Now, I know that the last time, we did get, we were able, thanks to Mr. Raj here, we were able to get a technical, um, grant, which really helped a lot, but it wound up paying more than we should've. But we wanna make sure that, you know, I don't know how many times you can apply for those.
So what do they do other towns? Have you, have you seen any other town?
No. When I went to Shrewsbury and I was asking for fees, I asked them about comprehensive permit. They couldn't give me any information. I went to the building department, I went to the town clerk, I went to the ZBA office, they had no idea. And I'm like, well, aren't you building a forty B project right over there, behind, uh, building nineteen? Or the old spags? I said, that whole project is all, you know, forty B. You know, what, what did you, nobody could answer the question. So I said, okay, fine, you can't answer it, you can't answer it. So then, I, we just, we have to do, we have, my, my philosophy on this is, we have to do what's best for the town of West Boylston. You know, I understand what you guys are saying about, you know, going out and doing some research, finding out what other towns, but no other town cares about us, you know?
Yeah, but my, my question is, you know, you said ten percent is too much to ask.
Well, I'm thinking that hopefully, if we put down like either a percentage or, or whatever, that we would, we would never have to go back to ask if the, if the sum is insufficient to fund the necessary consulting services. Who knows? Maybe we need a consultant for this, maybe we need one for, uh, engineering, we need one for, uh, traffic control, we need one for, um, waste management, you know, I, I don't know any of all of that, you know? But if we do need to have somebody specifically for that, they need to pay for that. Okay? That's why I'm asking, you know, I'm, I'm looking for some help from the board. How do you wanna do, do you just wanna leave it as worded? Or do you wanna put something specific in there? So that it's clear.
Well, I, so I do like this language, where it says, "The board may, by majority vote, require that the applicant pay a reasonable fee." So I like that, it's, it's the board's prerogative what that reasonable fee is going to be. So that's good.
Okay.
Now, the only other question is, what you're saying is, how do we characterize what that fee is? Can we just leave it as reasonable?
It's a, it's a based on a project, like a smaller project comes in, you know?
Like the planning board has a fee schedule that's based on, I think, the, the size of the, the project of the land, right? And the bigger the land, the bigger the project.
Say some smaller project, you know, they may have one or two forty Bs, uh, low incomes, whereas, uh, some of the projects, you know, everything is humongous, cramped in mon, huge developer, so he can afford to pay.
Is that the same thing as a bond?
Bond, I don't think so.
You know, what this, what the planning board does, they ask for bond, and then like...
That's for subdivisions, they'll ask for that, but that's over above the engineering review fees.
Okay.
And that's just to make sure that they finish the work.
The project is finished here.
Yeah, so that's different.
But, so on a comprehensive permit, we couldn't ask for that? Cause we need to make sure that the work...
I honestly don't know, how that works.
Alright, so, do you just wanna leave it as is, with that, just one, that, that word changed from retail to retain? And just leave it at that, and then we will decide if another forty B project ever comes to town, that we would decide what a reasonable fee is?
I, I would say so.
Yeah, I'm fine with the way it is. I also wouldn't mind, you know, if, if, if we've got time, I wouldn't mind, you know, I, I can do a little digging too.
Okay, well, we don't have to do this until March. You know, I figure, if it got approved tonight, then we could go with the February, and if people had, you know, if the board had, board members had questions, we can push it off. But I'd like to get this done, so we can get it onto, on, uh, onto the, uh, our website for the first of March.
Um, they, so if anybody files before then, we're still going by the old, uh...
The fees, if anybody files after February first, the fees are changed. Okay? Cause we already approved the fees.
So, um, okay.
But the forms...
The forms have not, the forms have not been changed. Okay, but the fees have. Okay, so the fees, the way the forms are written right now, they'll stay the same, until we make the change. But the fees are already changed. We already voted on that.
But that's effective only on February first?
Huh?
The fees.
The fees, right.
Whoever submit an application after February first.
Then they'll have to use the new fees.
So if somebody submit an application tomorrow,
Right.
they are still paying the old fee.
Right, right, right. Okay, so we're gonna leave that as is, with that, just one word changed, from retail, from retail to retain.
Yeah, that need to be, we need to think.
And again, it's something that we can come back to in the future, if you want to change.
Yep, okay. Alright, on the next page, at the very bottom, where it says decision, um, the two, the A and the B, okay? If the decision is not made at the hearing, it will be made at an open meeting of the Board of Appeals as follows. In case of variance decision, will be made within seventy-five days of the date of filing the application with the town clerk's office. In the case of a special permit or decision, will be made within ninety days of the date of hearing. Now, I was under the impression that we had sixty-five days for a special permit.
Yeah, you know what, uh, I'm not sure these numbers are correct either.
Okay.
I remember several months ago, I went through some of these forms as well.
Right.
And I did make a note of some possible updates. Unfortunately, I don't have that with me tonight.
Alright.
Uh, but I, I think you might be right, actually, that some of those dates might, might be updated.
Alrighty, let me just...
I mean, that's all, you know, that's, that's Massachusetts.
Special permits, public hearing within sixty-five days of application. Final action being vote and decision filed within ninety days following the date of the public hearing or deemed constructively approved.
Right, so special permit, the decision will be made within ninety days of the date of the hearing, is what it says.
Right.
Which seems to be what that says.
Right, within ninety days following the date of the public hearing or deemed constructively approved.
Yep.
Constructively means, proved means that if the ZBA doesn't do anything within the sixty-five days, then that thing is, then that permit is granted.
Yep.
Correct?
Yep.
Okay.
And then the variance.
I'm trying to find the variance. Hearing must be opened within sixty-five days, decision must be made within a hundred days unless mutual extension in writing filed with the town clerk. Written decision filed with clerk within fourteen days. Uh, copy of decision to applicant, property owner. If granted, variance does not take effect until twenty days after decision filed with clerk and no appeal, or appeal dismissed or denied as certified by clerk. Variance could also take effect by constructive appeal, failure to act within a hundred days. Basically, it's saying with the variance, they have a hundred days.
A hundred days.
A hundred days, so we're gonna change that seventy-five.
The only other thing that I would add is...
Go ahead.
You know, based on what you just read, is I think both of those deadlines can be agreed to be extended by the petitioner, and we can agree to accept that extension.
Right.
So I, I might just put, give us that little wiggle room
Okay.
in this language and say...
So, do you wanna, you have that at home? That, that's that, um...
I do.
When we had town council give us that?
I do.
Okay, so if you can just add that to this,
Yep.
and then send it to the rest of the board
Yep.
for their review.
Sure.
The applicant will be notified when we, the decision, well, we already do that anyways. Okay. Charlie, you have any questions about this? Okay, alright, okay. Alright, the next page, okay. Variance, excerpt from Mass General Law, chapter forty-eight, okay? And I think that that's pretty, what I was thinking is, oh, you went ahead of me?
No.
Oh, okay. What I was thinking on this page is, that whole thing for the variance, is to put it in bold. You know, so that people understand exactly what needs to be done, when they come before the board for a variance. You know, has to be, they have to show that it's hardship, they have to show that it's, the topography is off, and, um, there's one other thing. And that it's, and that, uh, substantive, that it's, um... I know there's, there's three conditions, oh, soil conditions, topography,
Yeah.
and then the hardship. And all three, according to the town council, all three of those things have to be met.
Yep.
Not one out of three or two out of three, all three of them.
Yeah.
So I think by, by putting that in bold, that would be, unless the board feels that we don't need to do that.
Any thoughts?
Yeah, it doesn't hurt. But language is language, you know?
Mm-hmm, okay. Now, the only other question that I have is, if you just look at the bottom, it says, see chapter forty-eight, sections six and nine, which I believe we already have that in the, when you go to the ZBA's, they're, um, our, um, front page on the side there, I believe that that chapter forty-eight, section six and nine are on there.
You mean that, the town website?
No, on the, when you go, when you go onto the town website, and you look under boards, and you look under the ZBA, tells you the mission and all, to the left, it tells you like forms and all of that stuff.
Yes.
I believe that that, um, um, that that's, that that's on there. In chapter forty-eight, as I was looking at that, I'm like, oh my God, that's pretty long, you know? But then I went on to the thing, and I saw that it's, it's there. So, we just need to make sure that, that, that they're able to read that, and, um...
It's also referenced right in the bylaw for that section.
Alright.
Section six.
Do we have to add that?
Thought I saw something on here, and I can't find it now.
Okay, I mean, it's a, it's a, for a lot of these things, when somebody files a petition,
Yep.
you know, I mean, they, they do hold, you know, the responsibility to, to understand these things and be able to, you know, work through them in a, in an application.
So basically, what I, what I would suggest is that we make sure that we highlight that, you know? Put that in bold and highlight that, so that they know that if there's an extension or change of pre-existing non-conformity uses, conforming uses, that they have to go to those, and read those two sections, okay?
Um, the spe, that special permit section,
That's okay.
that's gonna be bolded too?
Yep.
And then we're gonna bold the, all out of one?
Yeah, the C, see chapter forty-eight, section six and nine, okay? The next page is Form A. The only change other than the date is that, uh, who has petitioned the zoning board of appeals for a variance for property located. I'm just changing, this honorable board, I don't like honorable board. Okay, the next page, the same thing at the top, petition the zoning board of appeals for a special permit. Okay, Form C, there's no changes, other than the, the date.
And, um, I'm gonna double check those addresses.
Yep, and Toby's gonna double check all those addresses, because there's been some times when we've sent, um, a bunch of letters out to these places, and they've come back saying, they don't exist.
Yeah.
So, so Toby's gonna check on that, and then she'll update us on that one. Okay, the next one is the town of West Boylston, it's a continuation of Form Z. Z, so if they have more information, then they can put on that, okay? Form D is basically D,
Yep.
other than the date, okay? The next one is Form E. Um, I put applicant hereby request that the zoning board of appeals upon public hearing, so I changed the board to zoning board of appeals, okay? The next page, which is a continuation of Form E, there was no changes, yeah, okay? This is the one I was, this is what I was talking about, application for amendment or modification of permit of variance. This has to do with, this would come into play with three thirty-nine Maple Street, because the person that's, the person that's buying the land, he doesn't own the land right now, but the owner of the property now is the one that has to put in for the special permit. Once that owner sells the property to the developer, the developer then has to come and fill out an application for amendment or modification of permit of variance to show that they now are looking to get control of the special permit. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Okay. I mean, just review all of this, and if there's any questions, just pass it all, you know, send it on to the board, to the members. I mean, this is not gonna be a violation of, of, um, the, uh, the meeting law, because these are our forms, and this is something that we have to take care of. Okay, the next one is a continuation, and I put underneath the board is on additional information, if it's required.
Yes.
Okay? And then the last page is request for administrative appeal, there's no changes, so... With that, I'd like to bring, you know, have Chris and Raj, and Charlie and myself, and we'll get ahold of Nate, review this again, if you have any changes, you're gonna make some additions, that's fine, send it on to the board. This will be one of the items that'll definitely be on the February, um, agenda for February, and hopefully, we can get this. And Toby will check all these dates, uh, these addresses for the, um, the apartments here and planning boards, and she'll get back to us with any other changes that need to be made, whether she has to call them, or, and worse comes to worse, I, I'll just go down to the various towns and get the information myself, but, you know? But we'll work it out, and we'll get it done, okay? Alright, so that takes care of that. Okay, update on accessory apartment bylaw, I hope to have that finished and submitted to the board for their review in March. And what I'm hoping is that you'll review it, we'll discuss it at a, at a, at a meeting, and vote on it, and then we'll send it on to the planning board, have them review it, and then hopefully, they'll have a, a public hearing on it. And the, my objective is to get it on the October town warrant.
Are they aware, um...
Yes, the planning board knows that I'm working on this. Okay, alright, the next thing, okay, the update on the aquifer zoning bylaw. Okay, I'm not gonna go into a whole story, but everybody knows what's going on with the decision that we denied, okay? Monday night, the water commissioners met, I went to their meeting, and I asked them to help us to write a bylaw to protect the aquifer, um, protective zone. So they're going to help us write a bylaw for that, because right now, even though it says on the chart that you have to have a hundred and fifty, there's nothing in the writing that says that they can't come and ask for a special permit to reduce the frontage, okay? What I'm, what I'm asking the board is to help me to change that, so that it's gonna be black and white, hopefully, that if you're in the aquifer protection zone, you have to have a hundred and fifty feet of frontage, you have to have fifty thousand square feet. There's no gonna be any ifs, buts, or whys about it. We have to protect the water in this town.
Is that the state law?
What?
What's, what's the state law on that?
That's what the water department is working on for me.
Yeah, we need to know. Say, remember that, uh, we have, uh, some, some bylaws, two years, and some of them are four year. One year for the...
There's no bylaw on the aquifer protection, other than what...
State law, I'm talking about the state law.
Other than, the only bylaw, the, the only law that they, bylaw they have is what the water district, it was approved in nineteen eighty-six.
I totally agree. What I'm asking is, you know, even if you make a bylaw like that, the state bylaw...
That's why I went to the water department.
If there is any state bylaw, our bylaw will be gone.
Okay, but that's what the, that's what the water department is gonna do for us.
They're gonna check on it.
They're gonna search all of that forest.
Yep.
And they're gonna help us write this, make this bylaw. Besides, regardless of whatever happens, the bylaw is gonna have to go to town council for their review, okay? So town council will either come back and say, yes, or no. But with the, with the help of the water department, there, I wouldn't, I would hope that there would be no, no issues.
Okay.
You know?
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, did everybody get a chance to look at the cost certification for Afra Terrace? I know that it was sent out to everybody, okay? Afra Terrace was a forty B project, okay, it was all, um, how, it's all houses that were for sale. We had thirteen affordable houses. They, at the end of the project, they do a cost certification to see how much, um, what their builder made as far as profits. He came up with five percent, and the state and their CPA came up with fourteen point seven oh. He's under the twenty percent. Anything over twenty percent, then he would've had, they, he would've had to pay us. Now, the CPA that did it is, I believe, is... Now, the CPA that did it is, I believe, is someone that he had to hire that's promoted by the state. So there's no fooling around and it's taken almost, it's been forever. And, um, the housing specialist, I was at the affordable housing meeting, the, uh, last, their last meeting, this was brought up. And the housing specialist was point blank asked if she thought that this was, you know, that this went right and she said, yes, the figures seem to be okay. But we have until February ninth to send anything back to our mass housing partnership if we have any quims or quos or questions or concerns. The affordable housing did ask for an extension till the end of February. This is gonna be discussed, you know, between the ZBA, the affordable housing and the selectmen. If there's any concerns, I know, I think you've already brought it from the selectmen, haven't you? Because I know that town administrator has, has it. And I was hoping that she passed it on to the selectmen, for their review. So if there's any quims or quos or any questions about it, then, you know, so review it. If you see anything or you think that something doesn't look right or if you have any kind of questions, get them to Toby. And, um, we'll get them all together and I'll, I'll, we'll forward all of them to, to, to the town administrator and to affordable housing to see what, what's gonna be done about it, okay? Okay, we're almost there. Okay, any miscellaneous mail and paperwork that needs to be signed?
No.
Nothing? Time sheets, nothing?
Not yet, no.
Okay, alright. Okay, future agenda items.
Oh, um, that financial statement.
Oh, yeah, okay, the financial statement is, we did get a thousand dollars from, um, from, uh, the finance committee on our reserve transfer, so now we have a little bit of money.
We don't, do we need to reimburse them?
No. No, that's, that's not a free money, he will be giving it.
Okay. So they did give it to us. Um, I've talked to the town administrator about, you know, how we can go about so that we don't run into this problem because last year was kind of a slow, you know? If we had a forty B project, well, then we'd be, you know, we'd be okay, but, you know, we're not gonna wish on that, so. But anyway, so that's that. Okay, now, future agenda items, anybody have anything, anything that they wanna make sure, other than what we've already discussed, that's gonna be, we're gonna put on?
No.
Okay, Charlie, anything?
Nothing.
Okay, anybody have any thoughts, planning board, FISB, um, selectmen, anything that we need to know about? Oh, um, you wanna mention again about the senior center? Has that been finalized?
Oh, yeah, there, there will be a, you know, they are, I think it's official now.
Okay.
We will, the, the board of selectmen will be holding a special town election. For the, only purpose of the senior center is, on, town meeting is on twenty-sixth February.
Which is a Monday.
Monday. Town election will be twenty-seventh. If there is some bad weather and the town meeting is canceled on twenty-sixth, the backup date for the town meeting is twenty-eighth. Town election is twenty-seventh, whatever may be the weather condition.
Mm-hmm.
So, from the week of, from seventeenth, I think, to twenty-fourth, the FISB committee will be holding several information sessions to, eh, to give more information on the senior center.
Similar to what was done with the police station.
Yeah, yeah, information session.
And there'll be a figure?
So, the bid is already out.
Yep.
And the bid opening, if I am right, it's going to be on fourteenth, February fourteenth.
Valentine's Day.
Valentine's Day. So we will have the exact figure for the senior center.
Okay.
Construction of the senior center. So when we go out for the, when the FISB go out for the information session, the figure that will be given will be the-
Will be gospel. Will be gospel, it'll be-
Yep, that's the bid approved, approved bid figure.
Out of the one point one million that was approved at town meeting, do you know how much is, how much has been spent?
I don't know the exact figure, whatever the remainder will go towards the-
I, I understand, I'm just curious on how much? Okay. Will that be something that'll be brought up, the information?
That never came up, that's a good question, it never came up during any of the FISB meetings.
Okay.
Because we are still keep spending-
When is your next FISB meeting?
Next week.
Next, next Wednesday?
Yeah, I will, I will send an email.
Okay.
And I will try to get the, that-
Because that would be, well, for me personally-
Totally agree, it's a good question.
I'd like to know how much we've already spent because I know they did say that whatever is left would go towards, you know?
Yeah, the architect fee is, I think, you know, is done with a hundred percent of the work.
Okay.
So, you know, so that will be like a two hundred and forty thousand or something like that. Eight percent of the cost of construction, something like that, I don't know exact figures. But I can, I can still see, you know, whether they can provide that information.
Okay, that would be, yeah, because I think that might be a question that might be brought up at the information, you know? How much of that money is left? Because they wanna know how much of it is gonna go towards that final, you know, towards the final figure.
Totally agree.
Okay, alright, okay.
Oh, um, I just wanna mention everyone has a petition for the next public hearing.
Right, that's what I was just gonna get to.
Oh.
No problem, thank you, thanks for keeping me on my toes. Okay, the next thing is West Wilson Municipal Light Department Special Permit, twenty-five, uh, two twenty-five Shrewsbury Street, okay? Now, this is about that flywheel, okay? Toby is going to send out an email to John Fitch to ask him to send the link that he sent to us when he had that, um, phone conversation there with, about this. And have, ask him to send it on to the TV station. They're going to review it, I already talked to the PEG coordinator. They're gonna review it and see if, if it's, you know, a good thing that they can, you know, that they have good access and they can show it. And then hopefully, the week before our meeting in February, we're gonna try to get it on TV so that people can see exactly what it is. Instead of them just coming to the meeting and saying, well, what is this all about? At least they'll have, they'll see what it is. And then when John comes, John Fitch comes, he'll be able to explain the whole thing. He's already got the, the grant money, everything is all set to go, he just needs this. This is the one that I didn't think we needed to have a special permit, but because of, um, what's that? Angel Brook, he just wanted to be on the safe side. And I said, okay, fine, no problem. So, that's, so that'll be on the agenda for that, okay? And then of course, we just heard that the engineer doesn't wanna, you know, he needs two, he needs two variances. One is for the wall because it doesn't meet the, the guidelines. And the two was about, the second one was for the frontage. And the planning board at their meeting, when they met with them, told them, you know, that they needed to come to the ZBA. So, gonna let the planning board make that decision and, you know? So, that'll be it with that, so that's, that'll be on hold, okay? Toby, anything that came up within the last forty-eight hours that we need to know about?
No, can't think of it.
Other than we did get an email and I'm sure the board of selecting got one. CMR PC will be moving the end of the month-
Onum Building.
To Onum Building. Now, that's the one, you can see that from two ninety, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Is that, is that, it's on Mercantile Street, is that the same street that the DCU-
Just opposite to DCU.
So, is that the same street that they're on? Okay, alright.
I think so.
Okay, so the email came out and said that they're gonna be moving, they wanted to stay-
End of this month.
Right, they wanted to stay in central Mass in Worcester. And so this was a good, and there'll be, parking will be available in, um, the, the Onum Garage or the other garage. And I don't think there's a cost for that, you know, if you go in there, so that's a good thing. So, how long, do you know how long they've been over at Union Station, they've been there forever?
Yeah, I don't know, a while.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, just curious. Okay, alright, anybody have anything else that they wanna bring up?
No.
No?
No.
Alright, the next scheduled ZBA meeting will be on Thursday, February fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, okay?
And change it to February fourteenth, Valentine's Day.
Well, that's when, that's when the planning board is meeting, on Valentine's Day.
Okay, so bring all the candies.
Bring, bring those special hearts for all your favorite people. But, um, so anyways, so if we could just, you know, review the forms and, you know, Toby will take care, what she needs to take care of. Get the form, get the information to everybody and hopefully, we'll get that on the February. We're gonna put that on the February agenda, is the, is the forms, okay? We do have a nice dry eraser board in the, um, ZBA office. So as Toby and I remember things, we write it on the board so that when it comes time to write out the, make out the agenda, we just go to the board and make sure that everything that's on the board is on the agenda. So, um, anyways, so that's up there, okay? So if there's nothing else, Charlie, you have anything, you've been quiet, anything?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay?
Okay.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I really wanna know what a flywheel is, what the hell is that?
Well, watch the, they sent you a link, you didn't get it?
No.
Okay, well, um, I don't know how we're gonna do that, but it'll be on TV the week before. I'm gonna have it put on TV. And then when John Fitch comes from Municipal Lighting Plan, he'll probably show a presentation of it.
Be better, yeah.
It, let's put it this way, from the understanding that I have, okay? There's only two places in the country that have this. One is in Hawaii, one is in California. West Wilson has been chosen to be the first one on the East Coast. So I think that that's, so.
Again, I agree, it's a good thing. The only concern is, you know, how much noise it will make, right?
Well, and that, and that's where the-
That's the only concern, that's the only questions people will be going to ask, how much noise? Is it a humming noise all, all the time?
Well, John comes on, in February, he'll explain everything to us. And I asked John that once they get the permit, you know, if the permit gets approved and they put this up, that, you know, he sends us an email letting us, you know, to let us know that it's up. And I asked him, you know, if he would let the board come and see it and hear it for ourselves, you know? I know maybe, I don't know, we can talk about it at our next meeting, but, you know, maybe that could be a condition, I don't know. Alright, so we have a motion to adjourn, we have a second, who made the second?
Toby.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, alright, have a pleasant night, okay, we're on.